We're probably, as elected members, disappointed that we didn't see it earlier as we're trying to make some pretty big decisions over the next month or so. So I'll hand over to Christine.
So, under the legislation, you need to make a series of statements around financial sustainability and what you effectively will be attesting to in making the approving the Water Services Delivery Plan, so you understand what it is that you've been asked to do. We would suggest if you want to talk about any of the detail, and we are asking for feedback from you, we would suggest that should be done enclosed so that you can then have conversations with your respective partners rather than that happening through a public forum, the detail through enclosed, but that's your decision. Based on your resolutions to date, that currently you're continuing down a preferred pathway of a joint council or water organisation, you have not yet made your final decision, and that's the 14th of July. So we're just working now off your current resolutions around your preferred direction. I hope that's clear as to where we are and why we're there.
There is a sort of a strong indication made in public that the DIA have seen the numbers, are happy with them. So in our case, or when will we likely be able to get this sort of green light indication from DIA?
TCC has talked to one of the DIA representatives, has looked at the financials and is comfortable. That person is also broadly aware of the other councils. So TCC is confident, that person was confident, we are likely to be collectively sustainable. And not every council will be sustainable from day one. And we haven't looked fully at the other councils because the material's just come through, but collectively, yes, the confidence will be sustainable.
So, this is the projected joint financial statements for the combined water entity. So it'll be our numbers that have been modelled, plus the other two. We've got one council, the other one is either late, it's arrived, so we're going to bring that into the model to get a three council model, and that's what we'll expect to be able to have available towards the end of the week for you. So a lot of this stuff is just in time, as everybody's working on it. It's not a matter of that we've got material sitting there we haven't given you, it's under rapid development, just in time delivery because of the timeframes that we're working on. So we're also suggesting or recommending, at the same time as you adopt the Water Services Delivery Plan, you also approve the statement of commitment because that's the statement that shows that the council is committed and shows, and we draw from that effectively into the statutory required implementation plan.
Just for the people listening, we're not doing this because we want to, we're doing this because we're compelled by legislation to do it.
So is it fair to assume that the rangapu weren't informed about that relationship prior to their submission in support of a TCC?
We were first contacted in late April by TCDC about having a conversation about potentially going together in a waters organisation after the draft consultation document had been adopted, and it outlined that we were looking to a multi-council organisation and that we were open to other councils joining, or that was the resolutions that you'd passed. We were having some preliminary discussions, but they weren't far enough that there was something we could put into a public arena.
Yeah, just on that topic, I'm struggling to understand why we didn't mention it, given the comments to me at the time by elected members, and I raised this in a meeting with staff and my colleagues, around TCDC being quite happy for that to be disclosed, same with the Western Bay councillors, happy for it to be disclosed that we're in conversations with them, knowing particularly what hapu and iwi in this area would think about that. And it was deemed to be somehow impossible to sort that out. I think the chickens have come home to roost a little bit on this. One is that I'm still absolutely perplexed with why, when the legislation says any collective area involved in the change proposal has to be made public when we consult, and we didn't do that. And I really struggle with that. I don't think that we have followed the intent of the legislation, and I don't understand how we can say we've followed the letter of it.
So, when the consultation document was adopted by you, when you went out to consultation, at that stage, there were no conversations happening with Thames Coramandal District Council. So we couldn't consult on it because it wasn't happening.
The answer to my question was, we were told, we were consulting on a multi-council CCO that could include Thames Coramandal District Council, that was in a public excluded situation, I was told that. And we didn't make that public. All we needed to do was make that public. We could have said, this is an early indication, we do not know if Thames Coramandal will want to go that way, but we knew that. It was discussed in the meetings before we consulted. I'm struggling to understand how we can't say we knew.
So the basis of not sharing some of that information is that each of the councils wanted to have their own conversations around what they would be doing, whether or not they wanted to proceed with multi-council or others, and they want to have their own conversations with their community rather than another council sharing that information on their behalf. So that was, so that's what we were asked to do by the other councils, and that's what we respected. So it's part of the partnership, is that, whereas Western Bay were very comfortable us sharing that information, and we did share that, and we agreed on the wording and how that would look and feel, and we aligned our consultation documents so that they mirrored each other. So that's...
As a suggestion then, given what's happened, like, is there a way, we've pulled together fairly late in the piece, a workshop for Manafinau, as I understand it, on Friday, but is there a way to piece together something to invite some of the submitters who have made clear to me that they are concerned about this, to actually, who are not included in the rangapu invitation to have something later this week, or whenever we can do it, to allow them to also share their views from the wider community? Because yes, it's an issue for Manafinau, but it's also an issue for non-Manafinau who are feeling very strongly about this matter.
My view is that the consultation was really clear that council would be open to working with other councils, and that the CCO could include other councils. So while we weren't specific about particular ones, that was always part of what we were consulting on. So it's not as though that element hasn't been consulted, but that's a call for council to make. If you want to go back and get some further feedback, that's something you could choose to do. But it was, it was covered, so it's not like there's a big gap. Clearly, the Tonga de Fino have some specific matters, and it's deemed appropriate to engage with them. It's your call.
I guess, to my colleagues then, you know, to me, that would be a good faith and transparent way of doing this, because we know we got different responses from people depending on what they thought might be the combination of councils. And, you know, it was clear, there were comments from, I'd suggest you do do what I've done, which is go around and say to people, who did you think we were meaning, oh, you're going to partner with Western Bay Council? Did you think we were going to partner with anyone else? No, nobody mentioned anyone else. So I will put it out to my colleagues that I would suggest a workshop where we invite all the people who submitted, especially because we lost 300 submissions out of, we lost a third of the submissions, so we don't even know what they think.
councillor Crowther.
Thank you councillor Crowther. Are you able to share some of the views or concerns or opinions?
Well, I think we'll probably just keep moving. We can have that conversation offline, we'll just keep going.
Okay, so you have to adopt this plan, we have a statutory timeframe to do that with, and as mentioned, we need a decision so that we can give effect to that. So that's where this one is at.
We're trusting our partner councils to provide accurate and correct financial information. What's the verification step for us as Taurongi City Council?
That will be the due diligence process ultimately. We haven't quite put together the whole statements yet, and we would anticipate that the due diligence process, if there was anything that came to light, would be the process that you would use to have those conversations.
Deputy Mayor, score.
So, in terms of if that due diligence doesn't pass, when are we doing the due diligence and what happens if it doesn't pass if we have made a decision next week?
So we would be doing the due diligence after the 5th of August. So we're currently working on a bit of a due diligence plan, so the due diligence process is the process that happens before you actually then put in place the formal structures, set the CCO up, establish it legally, put the board in place, et cetera. So...
So it specifically, will be specifically said in the plan, if we're going towards a CCO, that if due diligence is not satisfied, then the opportunity exists for a partner to exit?
You could choose to add that into your commitment statement.
I would like that in, I don't know if anyone else would.
We can cover that when we get to the commitments.
I know, but these are things that we actually, we hear about now, and then we don't check. So it's something I would specifically want, can we put that as an action? I want to make sure that that is an out clause. But my question was actually on the previous slide.
Can we cover that in the closed section? If you're going to do that closed, but there's some wording, but we'll cover that separately, if you're comfortable with that. So yes, it's the sort of thing we can pick up.
Just on these, can we just confirm you are doing these for all three options?
We will do it for the preferred option once a decision is made on the 14th of July.
The third being which one? You do them for status quo and a Taurongi City Council only CCO and a joint?
No, the Water Services Delivery Plan is based around your preferred option. So that decision of your preferred option happens on the 14th of July.
Just to clarify sort of publicly, what are the assumptions, particularly with regards to stormwater overall, in terms of the split between residential and commercial?
So, these calculations, you base that just on connections, an average per connection? Yep.
Sorry, but I mean, this is all for a multi-council CCO, so you can't charge using the current model, which is property. So, just to cut to the chase, the split is going to be worse for residential and better for commercial. I'm concerned it might be undercooking it for residential, and especially for low value residential. I'm still not clear on what the actual principle that's driving that, the assumption that the CCA will pass on a particular pricing strategy, or what would it be?
Can I just jump in? So, what you're talking about is if all the assets went to a CCO, and there were rules that it couldn't charge capital value, charging for connection to a network, that lower socio-economic people would be paying a higher share than they currently are when it's a rate, because it's under capital value, which is true. You haven't made a decision yet on the way in which stormwater services will be passed through, and in the decision on the 14th. It's still quite open, but the detail of that has not been worked through.
I know it's sort of probably going further than a lot of my colleagues will want, but it's sort of a showstopper in terms of which option is going to be better to choose on the 14th. And the implications of this, it's quite explicit now in the updated act that happened last week, or the updated bill, sorry, that you can't charge on the basis of property. So therefore, you do have to have some foundational basis for charging, and although Auckland Council said capital value is best, they've been effectively overruled by the government. So when you look at what the implications are, I'm concerned that the numbers we've been presented will vastly understate the impacts on all residential consumers, and could even more understate the impacts on what you addressed Catherine, quite rightly, which is the lower socio-economic who tend, but not always, have lower valued properties, either to pay rates on or to pay rent, which will effectively be reflected in those waters charges. So, in that context, the people who are suffering the most in our city right now from the costs of housing could stand to have massive increases, depending on what happens. Now, what I'm looking at is unless we get presented with the range under the different scenarios, and we go into Monday's meeting, understanding what the implications of this are, we really are flying very blind on it if we're making that decision. And it's just, I can't understand why we've had months and months to work this through, we've known this is coming, why we can't actually get that information in a broad sense, or at the very least, understand what the principles are that drive the numbers we've been presented with, because I have no idea what's actually driving those assumptions. Is it 65-35 split? Is it based on property still to some extent, you know, what, because the numbers must come from somewhere.
So, water metering in terms of water in and water out, that's an easy one. But stormwater, what was the proposal around that in terms of volume metric, because that would be impossible? So they talk in a standardised charge per size of section, which, but then industrial would need a higher, because the ground coverage would be far greater than residential, that sort of stuff. What's the...
Right, I haven't actually read the detail of it, and there would probably be some work on that, but it is something that is still unclear, I think, to a lot of councils and to our councils, so that's why we're just left open for now, and kind of give you those options later, further down the track.
Some discussion about things like proximity, you'd look at your stormwater management plans, and which properties benefit more than others, and different catchments, and catchment management plans, so it could get quite complex. So those, that's the sort of, those sort of words are used in the conversations to date, but there's not clarity. Yeah, Steve's not only got that bit right. Yep.
Right, we'll keep, keep moving.
So just, two questions. Depreciation's going to be fully funded in all three councils?
Well, I'll let you know on Friday. I haven't looked at the other, so it will be fully funded in TCC, I haven't looked at the other councils' financials yet.
And second one, I think we're talking about 10 million to set up a joint CCO, is that correct? And is that between the three councils?
So the shared costs, we are looking at about 6.1 million. This doesn't include any digital spend, but that 6.1 million would be shared across the three councils.
And why would you exclude digital when we know that that's a cause for concern at TCC in general, and a $51 million cost per year? So why would that be excluded?
Because we haven't, we haven't come to a decision as to what that might look like. It's an unknown for us at the moment.
So we will know something more before next week's decision?
Well, we're hoping we'll get a little bit more clarity.
Okay, and so, last question, just the, we also talked about having up to $9 million in stranded overheads over three years, so both the 6.1 plus the potential digital cost, plus the potential stranded overheads. So those are all included in the financial model that's saying that it's going to be cheaper in the end to have the water services delivered under a joint CCO?
Yes, so the Water Services Delivery Plan does not talk about the stranded overheads of councils, so that's not part of the plan.
Sorry, so, as in though the 9 million is managed in councils, so it's not going to be a charge in the waters, so it's not included in the waters?
The stranded overhead would be managed within council.
And I guess my, not a question, but my observations to date are that we don't tend to find that costs are less than we first think they are. The 9 million potential cost will be paid by the ratepayers of Tauronga outside of the waters, whatever happens with water, that'll be an additional 9 million of cost to Tauronga ratepayers for non-water services.
Yes, unless we find a way of managing it down, and that will be the responsibility of council, but it is a piece of work that needs to be done.
councillor Crowther.
Catherine, on there, correct me if I'm wrong, your assumption is zero stranded overheads after 2034, or whenever year it was, correct?
That's how we model it, it's very, very high level, just to show you how it flows.
I know, it's very, very, very high level. I guess I'm conceptually struggling. So for instance, what do we assume would be the in-house waters staff that TCC would have? We will need people in-house to give us our view of what, you know, here's what we think's happening with this waters thing, because we have very limited influence. My understanding of the legislation is we cannot set the charges, we cannot control a whole lot of things. It's very prescribed, you know, what it can, what we can and can't do as elected members once it's set up. So our point of influence is we need people who can interface with them. And I'm like, that's not zero, it can't be zero, because we need our staff. We currently have staff in the waters team who are paid for by the waters funding from the ratepayers. But then we'll need this extra funding stream to pay for those residual staff who will have to be here that we need. And so, so that's just one example, but there are others. So how can it be zero? And how can we get a bit better in terms of estimating that?
If you get uncomfortable, you can always revert it back to council in part or in whole, the planning element, if you wish to. So it's not, you're not stuck with it just because you set it up from that perspective from day one.
Wouldn't that effectively just become services agreement by another name? Like, I mean, I know it'd still structurally be a CCO, but it'd be a, it'd just be like a services agreement, wouldn't it?
Yes, a service agreement. And so, no matter which way you do it, there's always going to have to be an interface at some point in the, in the planning and delivery model, and it's where do you draw that line? The draft working agreement to date proposes TCC as a project administration agent. It is purely an administrative agent, so someone needs to, if we collectively engage, say a lawyer, who's going to be the contracting party? There needs to be something, because the entity is not yet illegal, it's purely administrative. It allows any council to withdraw, so that was the point, I think, it was being discussed before. Provides how you're going to work together if you have differences of view, and outlines confidentiality and responses.
And just to your comment, allowing a council to withdraw is not the same as asking a council to exit?
I don't think you can ask another council to exit.
So I would be very interested before the decision to actually have a breakdown of how many staff and staff costs that we're including in that 6.1 million, because, and we're also, you just talked about a legal advice as well, we would definitely need that breakdown, please, and including, yeah, the staff numbers we're talking about, and probably the staff numbers councillor Crowther's talking about, as the interaction of what stays in TCC to interact with a new CCO.
So we've done some early thinking on that, so there's been a series of work streams. I think Hamilton, the Waikato one, I heard the other day, they're looking to set up a team of 50 people to move to the transition, so that's the sort of scale they're looking at. Ours, I don't think is that big, but absolutely. It's just very early thinking enough to be able to form those early draft budgets, but nothing more than that really at this stage.
Except that we will be making, I will certainly be making a decision on financial, that'll be part of it. So I, any assumptions we've made to date, please, we need to be provided before we make the decision.
Yep, so, so we would like some feedback on the commitment agreement, but as, say at the beginning, our recommendation is the detail of it, we do enclose, so you can give us feedback, and then we can share that with the other partner councils. A lot of the due diligence will be completed at a technical level, but we will clearly be reporting the findings of that, and you would form a view as to whether you're satisfied with that or not. So where the other councils are not yet operational post the election, that will be a matter that needs to be addressed. Again, they're all decisions for you to make, but we've just sort of followed that as the general layout, and then you'd also, actually then, it's establishing your processes around that, and then actually go through the appointment. And then you start the actual transfer of assets and your actual appointment of staff to transition staff from existing councils through, so there's a whole, what's the organisation structure going to look like, what roles are there, opportunities for redeployment from one entity into the next, selection processes, it's quite a comprehensive piece of work to actually move people.
I listened in to some other councils' discussions around getting towards this end of the whole decision-making process, and interesting was Rotorua in terms of the way they've sort of discussed some of their planning, and they've stuck to where they were when they went out to consultation around having an in-house preference for now, to meet the three September deadline, and then to commit to have a multi-council CCO. And when I heard Mayor Tap's commentary around that, I thought it was highly articulate, but logical set of thoughts, because it said, we're under pressure from the government to do this quickly, we need to meet the legislative deadlines, but we haven't, you can hear by the answers to some of the questions, we haven't had a chance to pull things together to the level of detail that at least some of us would like. And that's no reflection on our staff, it's just a reflection of the timeframe that it's operating within. So her view was what the majority of your council wanted, and what the staff there had eventually got to, which was go with what we can now, which is to put something in, put a stake in the ground to say, here's the direction we're heading, but we don't have to commit to it fully until after 3rd of September, in their case, a long time after, we could pick whatever date we wanted. So I guess, backtracking to a meeting a couple of, two or three months ago, you know, have we looked at that as an option that could be presented next Monday? That could be to do the, what I referred to at the time as the model, which is to say the preferred option in the long term is a multi-council CCO, but we, you put in the actual compliance with the legislation for 3rd of September that we're starting off as an in-house, and we have a, we have another off-ramp. We have an off-ramp that could allow us all to consider whatever level of information we want, and, and in the words of Mayor Tapso, to take our community and iwi on that journey, because the timing was too tight to do that. So I guess it's framing up the reason for my question, but to ask explicitly, can staff put an option in for Monday along those lines?
So the report is currently drafted, doesn't have that as an option. Well, it hasn't been one that we've been asked to explore to date. So you'd have to have a clear date and bring those financial numbers together, and the question is, who would you be partnering with? Because it would be a different proposition to what you're currently working on with those partner councils, who are currently looking to 1 July 2027. The other point I would make is the thing that's changed, which we are reflecting in the report for next Monday, is that the Crown has been very clear around city deal and the waters direction. So unclear on what their view would be around a phased implementation approach, I don't know what that would look like.
Just, just to be explicit, to address those points, that what was in my mind was, we could even, in the case of Rotorua, they put 2028, we could keep 2027, we could keep the same prospective partners, we could show that we're willing to partner with the government on the regional deal, or sub-regional deal, whatever it is, and to explore those options in good faith, and it would not necessarily change the final decision, I agree. So in that sense, it could postpone the inevitable, but on the other hand, it does give us an off-ramp, which in my view, seeing it's the single biggest council decision, I think, probably in our lifetimes, I would think, that, you know, it seems worth doing it right. And I look at our neighbours across and say, they've thought this through a lot, and they've got to that point where they are saying, rather than have a split council vote causing all sorts of problems, rather than have communities split down the middle, rather than iwi being upset about it, let's work through those, all those details that have been raised up there, work it through calmly. All we're doing is buying ourselves a period of time, so that what we send in on the 3rd we're compliant with, we could still end up at every step of the way choosing whichever option it would be that we choose next week. But it gives us time to make that in a fully informed way, and I guess that's what I'm suggesting.
Is it, just I'm trying to, is it not the same thing in the fact that, you know, yes, we're making a decision, you know, next week, but there is off-ramps? You know, we can leave for the commitment, the agreement allows us to leave. If the information that we find out is actually significantly different to what we think, and we go, actually, this doesn't work for us anymore, there is an option to get out. You know, we've got, we're basically making a commitment that we're looking to a CCO, we're going to deliver it in-house for next two years, we're going to deliver it in a multi-council CCO, assuming that that's the decision and, and that's where we're going. Like, I don't see that really any different to what Rotorua, apart from they've got an extra year ultimately, which is 2028. You know, and effectively, they're just kicking the can down the road. So, you know, I just don't understand how there's a significant difference.
For instance, something like stormwater, if we choose to go down a certain track, will we go back to those, right? You've chosen a multi-council CCO, but we'll still present to you all three options for the in-house only CCO and the multi-council CCO. Because to me, that's, that's the difference that I'm suggesting. That's what other councils have considered that and just stuck to in-house. Their view was, in your words, are they, don't kick the can down the road, just stick to in-house, and then at any time we can get into a CCO. But I get the sense there's not a mood for doing that on our council. So I'm suggesting not to kick the can down, but just to make sure we're fully informed at each step. It doesn't necessarily change the final timeline, it just means we have more information to consider when we make that crucial decision.
So, just a couple of comments on that. So if you are still sticking with 1 July 2027, then you actually need to get working on a comprehensive programme to put that in place. And the reason why we moved from 1 July 2026 is to get there from now, if you made the decision today, it's not possible, because there'll lead time to achieve that. So if you make a decision that you're still keeping your options open, to achieve that, you're still going to have to make all the commitment of the investment to plan and deliver, and set up your teams, and start doing all the work to get to, otherwise you can't deliver it by 1 July 2027. But for stormwater, there's an explicit recommendation that we continue to explore, and that you make a subsequent decision. So you're, you've passed a resolution, which we think should stand, which is all water services to be delivered by one entity, doesn't necessarily mean that the ownership and everything else needs to be with that entity. So that's, that's what we think needs to be further explored and assessed.
Final question on it then. So what I'm hearing is that until, two weeks ago, we thought we were going to be kicking off on, well, elected members thought we were going to be kicking off on July 2026, we'd questioned the timeframe, we were told it would be tight, but that you thought you could do it. You're suggesting now that in order to get to a whole year later, 12 months later, we couldn't delay any decisions by potentially two, three months, in order to be fully informed when we make those decisions? You need all 12 months, you've gone from saying it'd be July 2026 to 2027, and all of a sudden, you need the whole extra year and we can't have any time? I'm really struggling, Christine, with how that can be.
Yep, so we've always thought that July 26 was probably going to be quite tight, but as we've done some further work, and it's still quite a lot more work to do, so I can't say to you, no, another month won't work, or another two months, because it comes back to, we haven't, we've done enough work to get a bit of a feel, but we don't want to invest too much staff resources in creating work stream and detailed plans, when at this point in time, you actually haven't made a decision that you want to proceed. So it's a very fine balance between us doing enough that we can inform you, so you can make a decision, and us not preempting a decision and basically wholly investing our resources to deliver something that actually does not have a decision, because that would be inappropriate to do. So it's, we're just trying to manage that balance. Otherwise, we could, we could give you really good information, but to do that, we've got to pump a whole lot more resource into it, and that's ratepayer money, and is that appropriate when you haven't yet made a decision that you want to proceed? So we're trying to do enough to give you a bit of a steer, but we haven't time-lined all of this out to detail, we have a bit of a feel, we've got quite reasonable gants charts, but I can't say to you, another month won't work, or another two months won't work, because we just do not have the detail.
Right, have we got any other questions? Have we got anything that we do want to discuss around the commitment agreement that you think might be better done and publicly excluded? Is that a yes, or is there any other?
Yeah, I guess the juggle, as I said, is that there'll be, there's this percentage of proposed assets, which is, I believe the 64% was used. Then there are a bunch of other things, some of which we can discuss in public excluded... in public excluded around decision-making and so forth. But in terms of the actual financial, can we just get really explicit on when the, what the implications are for TCC